Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. Are there any requests to speak from closed session? Hearing none, we will adjourn to closed session and return to open session later. Thank you. Good evening, everyone who's in the boardroom and those who may be joining us by Zoom. I'd like to call us back into open session for the Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. Now we'll look for language access.
Buenas noches, para ofrecer acceso lingüístico a interpretación en español es disponible esta noche. Good evening. In order to offer language access, there is interpretation into Spanish available tonight. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Vince, will you please leave us in the place of allegiance?
Please rise, face the flag, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far as God.
Thank you. I have a few announcements from closed session. In closed session, the board took action to approve the July 7, 2023, approve and ratify the July 7, 2023 final agreement and general release between parents and the Santa Barbara Unified District for case 2022-23SE03-GLC, pursuant to which the district has agreed to fund, reimburse, or provide educational services to the student and the student's parents have agreed to release claims against the district in exchange for educational services as specified in the agreement. And that within the absence of missed minutes, our unanimous votes are four. So we had a 4-0 vote for this session, for this item. Thank you. In the closed session, the board took action to approve, ratify the July 26, 2023 Final Settlement Agreement between Parents and District and the Student versus Santa Barbara Unified School District Special Education Due Process Case, OAH, case number 2023010672, pursuant to which the parties agreed to resolve any and all issues related to attorney fees. The roll call vote was 4-0 in favor. In closed session, the board considered a promotion, acceleration, retention, appeal, education code 48070.5, and the appeal was denied. That concludes the report out from closed session. And now this, we want to welcome you.
I have a report from closed session.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. In closed session, the board voted unanimously 3 to 0. Ms. Wendy Sims-Moten recused herself, and with the absence of Ms. Munoz, the unanimous vote is 3 to 0. And the board voted unanimously to approve the appointment of Ismael Paredes Uyoa as Director of Community Partnership for Santa Barbara Unified School District. Welcome to Santa Barbara Unified, Mr. Paredes Uyoa.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the student board report. We want to welcome Anastasia to her first board meeting, and we look forward to her comments and certainly to her participation on this board. Thank you. Anastasia.
Thank you so much. Hi, my name is Anastasia. I am a rising senior at Dos Pueblos High School, and I am really excited to be the student board member for this upcoming school year. And at DP and at the other schools, we're just getting ready, finalizing scheduling, and as part of leadership, we're getting ready for freshman orientation and with our football game and just getting the schools ready for the new school year.
Okay, thank you again and welcome. I'm looking forward to the rest of your participation. So we'll next move to board comments and correspondence. Board members. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, first of all, welcome, Anastasia. We are very glad to have you here. Look forward to working with you and hearing all the reports that you'll have for us about what's going on not only at Dos Pueblos but at the district that pertains specifically to the students and the student voice. So welcome. Happy to have you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you. Welcome, Anastasia. It's going to be a fun year, and I hope you're excited. For my board report, I got a couple of things to report on. The first is we had a fun time, President Sims-Moten. Ms. Alvarez and myself got to join Ms. Edison and Ms. Alvarado, and also I don't know his last name, but Adam from Herrera from ETS. And we had a great time at the parade. It was fun to see all the kiddos out there and to be on the float, which was beautiful. Shout out to Mr. Shettler, who decorated part of the float, the best part I hear. And yeah, it was a lot of fun. It was a great time being out there. In addition to that, we had a couple of housing ad hoc meetings. We are preparing to bring a presentation to the board in September. So getting our ducks in a row for that one. Dr. Maldonado will be reaching out to each of the board members to get questions and concerns as well as our labor partners in preparation for that presentation in September. So I challenge all of us to at least start brainstorming our questions or topics that you want covered in the presentation so that we're the most prepared to have that conversation. Next, oh, I guess the last is to announce that, one second, sorry. On August 19th, from 8:30 to 5, there's going to be a Black Youth Summit for Santa Barbara County. It is going to be, all students in the county are welcome. At the end of the day, there's going to be a showcase for all the work that the students have done for that day, and it's going to be located in the Business Communication Forum in the West Campus of SBCC. Outside of that, I will be missing our next meeting for this month, and that is my report.
Thank you. Mr. Behany?
First of all, I'm disappointed to have not been on the float and part of the spirit of Fiesta. But I was there in spirit and I'll do my best to be there next time. I want to also welcome Anastasia and remind us that not every school district in the state does this. As a matter of fact, it's not been long that Santa Barbara has been doing this. I believe you're the third. And it's really a remarkable thing. Not only is it an educational experience for Anastasia, it is an educational experience for each of us that sit at the board, and it's a great opportunity to represent the students, and it's not something that we should take lightly. It's something we should be very proud of. And, you know, I know when Kavya finished, I told her that she was going to be now the newest member of the FBM, Future Board Members of America, because that's the other thing. Once you have this experience, it's something that we'll hope you'll continue to keep involved with as you move on through your career and your education. And welcome and thank you for your willingness to participate. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, board members. I don't have a whole lot to contribute. I echo all what's said here, no need to repeat it. Just enthusiastic and getting ready for the start of a new year. Looking forward to what that's going to be and what the possibilities are. And I also want to appreciate the fact that we do have that specialness of having a student board on this board and really do take it into account as we think and we address issues. So thank you again for being here. And I would just add to our float, we had four wonderful students that was also leading the float and they're dancing and celebrating as well, and it really was a celebration about what was, you saw the community there. So it was great to be a part of that. So thank you. So next we'll move to D9 with public comments. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you for being here. We value your comments. And I will be calling two members at a time. If you could please approach the podium and the next person stand behind. You each have three minutes to speak of items not on the agenda. The first one is Julie Churchman, and the second one will be Adolfo Gonzalez. Please. Please begin.
Hello, let me introduce myself for those of you who were not here three weeks ago. My name is Julie Churchman, and I was a physical education teacher at Adams Elementary School from 2010 to 2022. Yesterday, I returned to the Adams Playground and saw that the disaster light cement foundations are still in place, and the seam that connects the two foundations has been filled with new asphalt. I am here again tonight to request that all of you visit the school site and acknowledge that these foundations have been placed incorrectly. They now cause a safety hazard on a playground utilized by over 500 students all day for 180 days a year. As a teacher, we ask our students to recognize their mistakes and fix them. I am asking you to recognize your mistake and fix it. I also understand that the DSA, whose job is, quote, "to provide design and construction oversight to ensure that schools comply with all structures, accessibility, and fire and life safety codes", has required the school district to install these disaster lights. However, in doing so, they, and you, the Santa Barbara Unified School District, are not taking into consideration the daily safety of our students. As a physical education teacher, I am advised to carry my own personal liability insurance in the event that a student is injured while under my supervision. Not only could a parent bring a personal injury lawsuit against the school district, but also against any adult who allows children to play or participate in a school activity in a space that is not safe for that activity. By placing the disaster lights in the middle of Adams Playground, as you have, you are opening up the chance that a student will be injured and a lawsuit will be filed. After walking the playground again yesterday, I have determined that there is another more appropriate site for these disaster lights. Along the southwestern edge of the playground, the lights could be installed along the golf course fence. The student's evacuation site would then be closer to the emergency access road that goes along the lower field and out to Los Pacitas. Once the construction is completed at Adams and the lower field is no longer a construction site, this could also be used as the evacuation student pickup area. It just makes sense. I realize that the Santa Barbara Unified School District is going to have to pay to have this mistake fixed. However, the students at Adams will lose their open playground space forever if you do not fix your mistake. If this were one of the high schools, I doubt you would have placed these lights behind third base on the baseball or softball fields or in the football field end zone. This is the only open space the students have to run freely without the chance of running into anything. Please think about the children who attend Adams today and for the next 70 years, and not the cost. One last thing in this room tonight are former and current students and staff who are in support of saving Adams Playground. Many others could not make it today since they are on vacation. Please stand if you are here to support this cause. Thank you.
Hello.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Hi, well, I am Adolfo Gonzalez. A bit about me is that I went to Adams Elementary, and then I went to La Cumbre Junior High, and I graduated from San Marcos High School. I'm currently a sophomore at the University of Southern California, USC. And, well, in my free time, I like to go help Adams staff and just participate in events and just to never lose touch, because I do have little siblings at the school. And, well, I'm here because my little brother told me that they were building these big things that he didn't know what they were, but as he quoted, he said, "We can get injured, and I can't play soccer with my friends." So here he is. And as the time that I was there and I remember is that there was a four-square that is no longer there because the solar panels wiped that out. And then where Ms. Churchman's old PE classroom was, they expanded it, and so now that is minimizing the area that kids can now play. And the lower softball field right now is overtaken by concrete cement trucks and just massive cars, which I don't remember being there. And so, well, here's Damian. And so Damian, what can happen if you're running on the field? You can bonk your head. Do you want to be injured? Do you want them to get rid of it? Damian doesn't want him there, and as a former student, I don't want them there. And I know I'm young, but I do have Adams staff, former staff. And, well, the playground is a place where I made a lot of friends, and I made my second mom, Julie Churchman. And that's all I have to say. So can we just get rid of it or place it somewhere else?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Damian Gonzalez. Does Damon want to speak? No? Okay. The next speaker is Jim Mui. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
Thank you. You did wonderfully, by the way. I am a product. First off, thanks. Thank you, board members, administrators, for your service. I know this is not a glamorous job, and I appreciate it. Anastasia, go Chargers. I am a product of this district. My name is Jim Mui, a Santa Barbara native and product of SBUSD and a 28-year veteran of music education in public schools. First off, I want to congratulate us Californians for passing Proposition 28. The bill entitled Arts and Music Education Funding was passed by over 67% of the residents. That is 64% of California voters who are in favor of raising their own taxes to make arts and music education available for all, not just the kids who can afford private lessons. The district has a crisis at the junior high level though right now. With the inclusion of PE and the recent health class requirements, 7th grade students now do not have enough periods in the day to take a dedicated elective, including arts and music classes. If I were in your position, I would be asking myself how I could most effectively spend those Prop 28 funds to improve access to the school arts programs. I am fortunate to converse with several band, orchestra, choir, and drama teachers in this district on a regular basis, and all of them tend to recite the same mantra to me, and that is, "We need the seven-period day back." The seven-period day was cut back to six in the 2000s as a way to save funds during a deficit year. This is your golden opportunity to bring it back, and in doing so, allow every student the opportunity to take a class in arts and music. The bill intended this, and the voters expected this. Excuse me, I'm someone on script because I tend to wander as a college professor. Longtime Belie Valley Junior High Teacher Jeff Peterson stood right here before this board over five years ago asking for a reinstatement of the seven-period day. Then it was estimated that it would cost an additional $5 million per year. With Prop 28 funding at nearly $1 billion, I would hope that those funds could be considered for the sake of our arts programs. This is one of the reasons that the high school music enrollments are in decline, that and COVID, of course. The fact that one of your most talented teachers at La Calina is at a .8 teaching load is an indicator. The most glaring example, those at Santa Barbara Junior High. Again, a .6 assignment, I believe, that I'm not sure where it's settled, but now we have classes, diverse ensembles that are meeting at the same time before school. Please give the voters what they voted for, arts and music for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Caroline Abate.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you again about the comprehensive health education curriculum, specifically about teaching about abortion. In Chapter 20, Lesson 1, abortion is defined simply as surgical procedure to end a pregnancy. However, the truth is abortion is much, much more than that. For example, what about the humanity of the unborn baby? Take a closer, more thoughtful look and see that the unborn baby, from its earliest moments of life, has unique DNA that is distinctly human, creating either a boy or a girl. DNA is replicating and cells are dividing. Oxygen is being used in cellular respiration as the baby is developing in biochemical processes identical to the ones occurring even right now in your own body. Take a look at your own hands and see your own unique fingerprints that were formed while you were still in your mother's womb. The unborn baby has his or her own unique fingerprints, a beating heart and nerve endings with which to feel pain. By every metric, we can see that the unborn baby, boy or girl, is just as much a person as you and I. So we can see from this perspective that textbook definition is dangerously incomplete. It does not tell the truth about the reality of the destruction of a person's life that occurs during the surgical procedure to end a pregnancy. It is overly simple, deceptive, and very misleading, and even more so when taught in middle school to students 11, 12, 13, or 14 years old. Middle school students
30 seconds.
do not have the wisdom, maturity, or life experience to understand all of the serious lifelong emotional and psychological implications of abortion. A better path forward would be instead to teach the unquestioned value of every moment of every person's life, from our earliest unborn moments until natural death. This is a much healthier, safer, more positive, and more appropriate learning and teaching focus for our students.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment. Ms. Sims-Moten?
Thank you. And before we go to let those folks exit out, so. Okay, thank you. So before, board members, before we move to the consent agenda, I'd like to recognize the new SBTA Representative, Mr. Hosby Galindo, to represent you. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so we'll move to, we will move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board members would like to pull? No pull? May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Aye, second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, wow, that moves us to the F, Action Agenda. Let me see, let me note the time. Okay, 6:47. All right, good. Okay, so next we'll move to the Action Agenda. F1, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, I move to approved approval of student discipline, education code 48918, case number 202223-30.
Aye, second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. F2?
I move to approve student discipline, education code 48918, case number 202223-31.
Aye, second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now we'll move to F3, approval of resolution number 2023-24-3 for the agreement of acquisition of public right-of-way for sidewalk purposes at Santa Barbara Junior High facilities. Ms. Marina, I see you coming forth.
Good evening, President Sims-Moten, board members, Chief Operating Officer Steve Vince, Executive Cabinet, and members of the public. Resolution number 20232403 pertains to the acquisition and right-of-way easement agreement between the school district and the city of Santa Barbara regarding the Santa Barbara Junior High School Multi-Use Path Project. With us today are representatives from the city of Santa Barbara, directly supervising this project. Jessica Grant, Supervising Transportation Planner, and Alexis Flores, Engineering Design Supervisor. They will be making a short visual presentation about this project. The purpose of the resolution is for the Santa Barbara Unified School District to approve an acquisition and right-of-way easement agreement with the city of Santa Barbara. The city is working on the Santa Barbara Junior High School Multi-Use Path Project, which involves installing a concrete multi-use pathway along East Cota Street from North Quarantina to North Nopal Street. This project includes a section that runs parallel to the Santa Barbara Junior High School property. The city will need to acquire this easement to accommodate the expanded sidewalk width required for the improved multi-use pathways. So there are clear benefits of this project to the school, to the community, and to the district. And now I will seat to the city representatives for the presentation.
Hi, good evening, President Sims-Moten, and board members, and Chief Operating Officer Steve Wentz and the Executive Cabinet. Thank you for having me this evening. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Jessica Grant, Supervising Transportation Planner with the city of Santa Barbara, and as Marina just mentioned, Alexis Flores, who is our Design Engineer Supervisor with us tonight as well. So just a few-minute presentation on the Santa Barbara Junior High Multi-Use Path Gap Closure on Cota Street. And as Marina just mentioned, the request is to approve the acquisition agreement and sidewalk easement in front of the Santa Barbara Junior High. Just a little bit of background. Right in front of the junior high is a missing gap of critical bike infrastructure. So currently on Cota is a protected bike lane that gets eastside residents from the east side to downtown and a lot of eastside families and kids going to Santa Barbara Junior High, both from the east side and then, of course, from the Laguna and downtown neighborhoods as well for kids coming towards the east of the school. So we have an otherwise fairly complete bicycle network with just recently where we had the Cota on-street bike lane installed that connects right into the multi-use path that runs alongside of the junior high. Coming up in about a month and a half will begin construction on the Lisos Bike Boulevard, which is a bike-friendly street, so kids do not have to use Milpis. This will be a slower street for kids coming, again, within the east side to Santa Barbara Junior High. So very exciting things. So this is the little segment that we're missing. So this is just a couple of photos during what would be a typical drop-off time in front of the Santa Barbara Junior High. And as you know, the drop-off and pickup can always be a very chaotic time, especially in front of the junior high here. It is very chaotic. A lot of, from the drop-off is, of course, right in front of the schools, and you have pedestrians and cyclists and cars all commingling in the same area. One of the things from the prior photos and then from this photo too is we have a lot of people parking in the red zone areas. So red curb, the main importance for that is that you do not park in the red curb areas. Why? Because that's critical sideline visibility in and out of the school driveway and then across the street to get to the junior high. These are just, again, a few more photos of parking in the red zone, right in the bike infrastructure. These are students trying to get around the parked delivery vehicle to get back to this school. This is someone that's on the street. The way they're positioned is leaving them susceptible to being doored, and then, of course, with vehicles pulling out suddenly as well. Just another, just a picture just showing the weave that's common for cyclists and vehicles right in this area. And then, as I mentioned, for kids getting across the street, parking in the red, again, with the mix of users and trying to get those critical sightlines that we need to get kids to and from the junior high safely. This is, so all those photos were just coming towards the west to the campus. This is going from then east to the campus. So this is the existing multi-use path that runs along Ortega Park and the school. So for cyclists coming from that direction, then they have to go onto Cota. So for cyclists coming from that direction, then they have to go onto Cota Street to then get to the driveway. And so, again, that's also another, ripe for a lot of conflict movements. So what do we do with all of this? What we're proposing is to separate the cyclists from the roadway in this section. And how we would do that is doing a multi-use path. So taking the existing six-foot sidewalk that runs in front of the junior high, we would double that for cyclists and pedestrians to use. So again, you don't have the active transportation users weaving in and out with the cars during those very chaotic drop-off and pickup times. This is what the path would look like, just briefly in a plan view, sort of the cartoon image, but again, a widened path area and then a nice connection to the existing multi-use path. And then, as far as for discouraging vehicles in the red curb areas so we can have good sightlines for kids crossing the street, that will be protected vertical buffers, so cars would not be able to pull into those areas. With another grant-funded project, we were able to install curb extensions both at Nopal and Quarantina intersections several months ago to lessen the amount of time pedestrians are in the roadway to get to school. And then we upgraded the rapid flashing beacons as well with the latest technology. And that just wraps up the project. Again, we're requesting the acquisition agreement and sidewalk easement. All of the funding for this is grant-funded through a local grant program called Measure A, and it's part of the Safe Routes to School funding pot that is funding the majority of this project with some city matching funds as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for this time. And it's been just an honor to be back before the school board. I used to come here pre-pandemic a lot to discuss all the fun projects. We have so many great Safe Routes to School projects recently constructed and coming online soon. So if that's something of interest in the future that you would like as a topic, I'd be happy to return.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here again, and we certainly want to hear those updates. So we'll have to figure out how to get you on the calendar. Are there any requests to speak on this item, Ms. Alvarez?
No, no public comment.
Okay. Board members' comments or questions? Ms. Alvarez?
First of all, thank you. Thank you to district staff. Thank you to city staff for your collaboration. It looks like a very good beneficial project for both entities and especially for students. I do have a couple of questions, and maybe you already covered this. However, I want to get it in my head. When, assuming this is approved, when will this project start?
The goal is for the project to be constructed over the winter break, so we have least disruption to children while they're at school. We're in a tough bidding climate right now, and so if all things go perfectly, we are lined up for that timeframe. If for some reason there is a hiccup in the bid process for this, then we would look at the next school break would be, spring break would be the next time to do this. We expect that the longest it would take, three weeks, maybe shorter. That would be decided once we have a contractor on board.
Yes, so being the winter break is three weeks this year.
It's three weeks this year, so that would be perfect.
That would be perfect. And I'd like to hear a little bit more about, has the principal been part of these discussions?
Yes, thank you for that question. Yes, the principal has been a part of that discussion as well as the school district. In order for us to even request the funding for the Safe Routes to School project, we do require acknowledgement of support as we continue through the design for this process. So we did have that earlier on at the onset for the grant application.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Good to see you, Ms. Grant. Can you talk a little bit about what sort of infrastructure is going to separate the pedestrian walkway versus the bikeway? I know it's going to be twelve feet long, so quite a bit of space, but what does that look like? And then for the bike lane, is it going to be two-way? Because right now on Cota, I believe it's supposed to be one-way. I know people kind of go the other way sometimes, but can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, and in this section, it would be a two-way path for cyclists and pedestrians. We think the volumes are low enough that the users can be commingled.
So pedestrians, there's not going to be anything separating bikes from pedestrians?
Correct.
Okay. And then it kind of looks like from the animation that it's only for that section where there's the loading zones and the red curb, where we would have the bicyclists come on to the sidewalk area, continue. If they're going to state, then they would get back on to Cota, but if they were going to use the bike lane that goes just adjacent to the school district, they would continue on that bikeway?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. No concerns about during the school, during the drop-off period with commingling of pedestrians and bikes?
This, what, we will stencils the path for just that it's, again, a shared use facility. We do other shared use facilities in town, the Beachway, and then recently constructed the Las Vasitas Modoc Multi-Use Path. So users can be commingled. And will it be without a hundred percent of conflicts? There will be some conflicts of just the learning curve for the shared users, but those, we anticipate that to be minimal. And for the, and they're separated from the vehicle traffic. So that's the big, if there's a significant injury, it's vehicle versus cyclist vehicle versus pedestrian. So we do feel that this is the safest level of facility.
Yeah, and that's a fair point about it already existing and Cabrera Boulevard and, yeah. So I'm excited about this. I bike right here all the time when school drop-off and you're dodging cars, so I'm okay being on the sidewalk. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
All right, thank you. Additional comments or questions from the board members? Hearnan, thank you for your presentation and the questions that were asked. I just checked them off the list. I already did that. So with that, I know you're seeking a motion for approval. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Jessica.
I move that we approve, let me get the right wording. I move that we approve resolution twenty-three-twenty-four-dash-o-three for the agreement for acquisition of public right-of-way for sidewalk purposes at Santa Barbara Junior High School.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Next, we'll move to F four, approval of human resources recommendations. Dr. Becky, I see you on your way.
Good evening, Board President Sims-Morton, board members, Mr. Wentz. Tonight I bring to you the human resources recommendations, and if I could just, as usual, take a couple moments to point out a couple highlights. I did want to first start with recognizing that with your approval tonight, we will have Fred Razzo stepping in to be interim principal at Santa Barbara High School while we look for the next principal for that school, and that will be a very popular move by that staff there who has felt a sense of calming, knowing that Fred will be coming over and stepping in in the interim. I also wanted to move down the list to retirements and point out that longtime administrator Michael Alvarez is retiring after thirty-three-plus years. And Michael served for many years at Lacumbre Junior High under Joanne Keynes, and they did, I actually got to watch some incredible work by them because I was a fellow junior high administrator at the time, and then moved on to be an administrator at La Calena Junior High, so I want to congratulate him. Also, other retirements in the classified ranks, from Food Service Jose Narano, and then Anaberta Omedo in ESS. Also, just wanted to congratulate the promotions of several classified individuals. Octavio Gonzalez, who will take on the head custodian position at Washington. Montalvo Gutierrez, who will become senior gardener at Lacumbre, and Francisco Seordia, who will promote to a youth outreach worker out of Student Family Services. And then again, Alma Flores and Carol Hernandez, both with language stipends, which I do want to point that out each time. And with that, I'd like to turn the list over to the board for questions or approval.
Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No public comment on this item.
May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments before somebody makes the motion. Number one, yes, congratulations to all the retirees and deep, deep appreciation to Mr. Alvarez for all his work. I have personally witnessed the love, the compassion, the commitment to Santa Barbara Unified, to students, and of course, to the people that he had the privilege to work with. So thank you, Mr. Alvarez, for your service. We appreciate it. And on behalf of all the students that benefit from your dedication, thank you and congratulations on your retirement. I also want to thank Dr. Simmons for her work at Santa Barbara High and wish her the best in her new adventures. I worked at a high school, and I know it's really, really hard to be a high school principal, so thank you for your work. And also, the third comment is, I will recuse myself from this item being that a family member is in this personnel report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for those comments. May I have a motion?
I move to accept the personnel recommendations.
Second.
And because we're, I'll do a roll, a roll call vote on this. Mr. Banning?
Aye.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Sims-Morton? Aye. Motion approved, three-one with one recusal. Thank you. Motion passes. I think that next item is yours as well.
Thank you. So the next item is the Human Resources Contract Bundle. And I wanted to put up a presentation here, just, it's actually just a one-slide presentation. But I did want to take the opportunity to really break down our HR contracts in a way that demonstrates for you the relationship to not only the divisions within Human Resources, but also the other departments in our district. So this slide actually gives you that view of what the contracts are. Where they fall on the left-hand side is the division of Human Resources that those mostly are associated with. And then across the top are the departments that it's collaboration with. So for example, I'd like to, I'd like to demonstrate here that Frontline is primarily a HR platform, but it is something that ETS brought forward as a contract. But I still wanted the board and public to see its association with Human Resources. Same with, if you go down to the classified temporary employees, you know, Robert Half and Maxim, those are often temporary employees placed at school sites. There's a collaboration with special ed or other departments because of the classified temporary service that we provide there. And so this view gives you, just gives you that link between departments and the divisions in my department. I also wanted to point out that the, under the certificated, where you see all the professional practice trainings, those are all, they don't really have costs associated with that. They're all the partnership MOUs that we enter into, and we do bring those to the board, but they are with the institutions that help with the pre-professional work that our employees need to engage in before they become credentialed or qualified to act in our schools with kids. So those are those professional practice training and fieldwork. And I do have a few contracts that are in this bundle up for approval tonight. Not all of them, and we'll bring the ones back, but I did want you to see the scope of all the contracts that we produce out of HR. The contracts that I'm bringing forward tonight, I'll just give you the list of them, and then if there's any questions, we can turn it over to you, the board, for any questions. Maxim, Leadership Associates, the Mentoring and Coaching by Jerry Fawcett, Loma Linda Clinical Supervision, that's of our mental health trainees, Loyola Marymount for school psychologist training certification, SAVE, which is Save a Valuable Employee, provides counseling services and other referral services to all of our employees. And then University of Nebraska is our speech and language pathologist training and intern program. And with that, I will turn it over to the board for any questions you might have.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez, any requests to speak on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay. May I have a motion? Are any comments or questions from the board?
I'd like to ask that the Leadership Associates contract be pulled from the vote and be done separately.
Okay. Thank you for that. With that request, I have a motion, to have a motion to approve all the contracts with the exception of Leadership Associates, which will be taken on a separate item.
So moved.
Ms. Alvarez? Okay, you need a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay. Now we will take a second motion on the Leadership Associates. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Leadership Associate Service Agreement with Santa Barbara Unified.
I need to recuse myself from that vote.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. With the recusal, I'll call a roll call vote. Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Sims-Morton, yes. Passes three-one with one recusal. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Okay. Next, we will move to item F six, approval of administrative hearing panel members for the twenty-two, twenty-two-three, twenty-four school year, Student Family Services.
Good evening. Each year, we bring you this item as a request for your approval for the listed staff to serve as panelists on any student discipline hearings. These would be for students that are being recommended by schools for an expulsion. The reason you see over fifty names on this list is it's really important that we have the ability to pull a diverse panel together and that we also pull a panel together of folks who don't know the students and have any kind of background or history so they can remain neutral in those roles. As a reminder to the board, you ultimately are going to be the decision-maker, but these panels will make recommendations to you regarding student discipline cases. And so my recommendation is that you approve this list. Note that it is comprised of district administrators, school site administrators, and certificated staff like our teachers on special assignment or ISSs who are not assigned to a school. Are there any questions about this one?
Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the boards or questions? I would just like to extend a thank you for the folks who are on this. We know how important the work is that they do, ultimately bringing that information to us. So I want to acknowledge the work that they do and to say thank you. So with that, may I have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Shetler. Next, we'll move to F seven, approval of educational service contracts for twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four education services. Oh, Ms., Dr. Sheff feels on her way.
Good evening, Board President, board members, Mr. Wentz. I am here to present a additional contracts. I did a presentation at the last board meeting, and these are the additional contracts that I had promised to bring forward, and I ask for you to provide an approval of this bundle.
No public comment.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Any comments and or questions from the board? Hearnan, thank you for bringing that. May I have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the contracts for educational service as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, board members, we're at that time where between action agenda and report discussion, we normally take a break. Are we willing to do that or keep moving? Okay, then you know how to do self-care. All right, we're going to keep it moving. So, yes. So next we'll go to the G report discussion, G one, public report on forty-five-day budget update. Ms. Kim, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you.
Turn that on. Okay, there we go. Good evening, everybody. And so, this is a report on the 45-Day 23-24 Adopted Budget Update. And it's a report, it's not something that you need to vote on, which is kind of nice. There we go. So, what is it? The last time you approved the 23-24 Adopted Budget, we didn't really have the final budget yet from the state. I kind of reminded you that there were three budgets floating out there, and there was going to be some negotiations happen. And so, now we have it. So, we're going to just take a look at what the differences are and how they affect Santa Barbara Unified. This will be short and sweet, hopefully. So, the final state budget was approved and signed by the governor on July 10th. So, the differences are, the first two we're really very happy about. So, the revenue changes for the two block grants that we were kind of a little bit concerned about going forward from May revise. The first one was the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. We have already received $15 million for that block grant, and in the May revise, we were told that about $5 million we would have to pay back. And then with some negotiations between the three budgets, what we finally ended up with is 12.9 million. So, that's an increase in revenue from the adopted budget, because we were assuming it would be worse than it actually ended up. So, that's good. The Music Arts Instruction Block Grant was, we had already received half of the funding for that. We had received $3.8 million of the total 7.6 million. And we were told for May revise that that's all we were going to get. We were just going to get the first increment. And we're very happy to find out that we are going to receive more money. In fact, almost very close to what the original estimate was, we're going to be receiving three point, close to four million instead of 3.8. So, that's fantastic. We're really excited about that. So, the increase to our restricted revenue then is 5.7 million. So, we're, yay. So, and then what we had not included in the budget yet, as you remember, we had that salary increase of 2%. We had said at the time, we just didn't have time to get it into the budget, but we would bring it back now at the 45-day update. So, that isn't now in the budget. And then also, the $1,000 stipend is in the budget as well for the Learning Recovery Block Grant. That's where we're charging that. So, we had an increase of 5.7 million to the revenue and an increase of expenditures of 5.3 million. What we still don't know is what our final property tax number is for the year. We are still waiting. So, can we zoom in a little bit, Sandra? This is the unrestricted multi-year projection. This is just the unrestricted side of our general fund, our Fund 01. I just kind of wanted to show you, with those changes, we talked about what it looks like. So, down there at the bottom, you can see the percentages. Let me get to my notes. So, when we brought the, when you approved the adopted budget, our numbers here are, are actually better than what you had approved. For the 23-24, in the adopted budget, you had approved 12.74% of the total unrestricted reserves down there at the bottom for the column that says 13.96. So, we went from 12.74 to 13.96. That's an increase. And then the next year, so what we're looking at is, do you think you could scooch up just a little bit, so we could see the top, so we can see what the years are? I don't know if we can. So, 23-24, 24-25, and 25-26 are the three columns there to the right. So, maybe you can scooch back down, we can see the numbers again. Thank you. Thank you for your scooching. So, so that in 24-25, what you see there is 13.3 was 13. So, that went up a little bit, too. The only one that decreased just slightly was 25-26, and it went down by 0.78%, and I think that's specifically due to the 2% increase. Just got caught up there. Okay. So, the next, I don't know if it will, there we go. Can you, okay, so now this is, nope, it didn't work. I'm trying to get to the next. Can you do it? I'm trying to get to the next slide. Maybe, okay. Oh, okay. Now, let's go back one more. There we go. Thank you. Okay. Now, try to zoom in again. This is the unrestricted and the restricted. So, this includes the restricted side. You can see some red numbers there, 23-24, 24-25, and 25-26 that, that are, that are showing deficit spending there. The reason why it's deficit spending is because we have carryover money. So, remember, we received all of that money for the Learning Recovery Grant, 15 million, it's still sitting there, but now is going to be 12.9 million, and the Music Arts Grant. None of that has, not many, not much of it has been spent. We've spent some of it. So, when you have carryover monies like that, especially on the restricted side, it'll look like you're deficit spending, just because you're spending the money that we've already received in a prior year. So, don't get concerned. Okay? And I think that's it.
No public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from board, questions? Ms. Alvarez?
First of all, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez, to you and your team. And so, for unrestricted and restrict, and restricted NYPDs for salary and benefits, that for 23-24, you mentioned, everything we know today is included in there, right?
Correct.
The 2%, the additional 2% and the stipend.
Correct.
The one-time stipend.
Yes. It's all in there.
It's all in there. And the, there's about 66 million in restricted salaries from the unrestricted to the restricted. It goes from, I think, 123 million to 189. And I think you've already mentioned, I asked this before, and I need to think about it again. Are the positions funded with ESTER funds? Are those in the, our multi-years, or have those been removed?
So, they're in the, they're in the years until the funding goes away, right? So, yes, they're removed after the funding ends. So, that's why you'll, you'll see kind of a
A decline.
A decline.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Only question I have is, you had down in your presentation, $2 million flat for the $1,000 stipends. Is that because we don't know yet exactly what the cost will be for the stipends?
Yeah, that, that's what we had estimated. It's probably going to be a little bit less than that, because it's just $1,000 based on the amount of employees that we have. Yeah. So, it, I think it'll probably be a little bit less.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? I just had, thank you very much for the presentation, and we're actually doing fiscal before dark, so I just want to note that as well. So, the arts and grads, I think the arts and block grant, is that Prop 28?
No.
No. So, I just want to make that distinction.
Yes. Those are two different things.
Okay.
So, we will be receiving Prop 28 money as well. We're not including it here. There are still a lot of, not questions about it, but a lot of things that we don't know yet and that the CDE will be providing to us. They told us sometime this fall. But no, it's not included. So, two different things.
Okay. Thank you for that distinction. Mr. Vince?
Yes. They're, they're still finalizing the, the guidance on how we can use that, those funds. So, but we did look into schools, Schools First, and we did, we were able to see the allotment, which is sizable, about a couple million, so.
Mr. Escobedo?
Sorry. One more question.
It's okay.
For the property tax, is this just kind of a funky year because the tax date got pushed back? Or does it typically take this long to get back information from the county?
It seems like it's a little bit later than usual, but I checked just today on the county education website, and they said that we will know by August 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
Here are no additional questions or comments. Thank you for your presentation. Next, we'll move to G2, First Reading and Discussion of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 5117, Inter-District Attendance. Oh, Ms. Edison, you are already there. Okay.
So, good evening, all. Steve Vance and our superintendent's absence, and much needed vacation she's earned. I am bringing forth, as a recommendation of the board, you asked that we look at our board policy around inter-district transfers, remembering that inter-district transfers are transfers between districts, not within our district between schools. So, in-between districts. What you have in front of you is actually a new BP, which is the, a language, remember, our board policies are about laws and board principles, like what is our guiding our work? And then a, and, and AR, Administrative Regulations, which is how we make the BP live in daily practice. So, what I did was take the language from our old BP, which was written as an administrative reg, and moved it over to the administrative reg. So, that is new for us as a district, because we only had a board policy, not a reg. And, and the board policy that you're reading for your first reading is the CSBA's language. It's not changed. I do want to draw your attention to two changes in the reg, though. Previously, our board policy, the board policy, which was really our admin reg language, read that we would review late in inter-district transfers after August 1st. I moved that back to July, because it's just fair to families to know going into the summer where their students are going to go. I, I actually start reviewing them around March, but for our purposes of what we commit to our community is that we moved it back to the, to July. The other change you'll see is that for appeals, any family that gets in a, an appeal to our office by June 15th will be put on the agenda to speak to the board in, in closed session. All other ones will still submit a written appeal, but we're not committing that we would be able to get them into a, a session in the summer so that they can come in and have a conversation with you. So, we're trying to get them all as soon as possible and get them on an agenda and spread them across many board meetings if we have to, so that we're not taking up all the closed session time. So, those are really the only changes, but not really substantive. Any questions?
I'm assuming no requests to speak?
There are no public comment.
Okay. Board Members, comments or questions? Mr. Banning?
I just want to clarify that when, when you moved the policy language into the administrative regulations, there were no changes other than those dates that you talked about.
Other than the dates.
So, the, the statement of, about negative fiscal impacts remains with the date that it was occurred, October 10th, 2017, was the change.
That reads in the BP now.
It's in, it's in the BP. It's now in the regulation. It was in the BP, right?
It is in both, actually.
Okay.
Yes.
And also, things about what the, the exceptions are, where it reads, except as noted in Board Policy 55111.1 for students who meet one or more of the following criteria, where there, there were no changes in that criteria.
There were no changes.
Okay. And I think that as a board, we had some questions about what was, what those definitions meant trying to come to that. And I'm hoping that before this gets approved, that we'll have an opportunity to have discussion about the things that, that we talked about during the, the discussions this year on acceptances and rejections of the, of the policies, of the requests.
Absolutely. And the discussions were around number six, which is that extraordinary hardship.
Uh huh.
And in that language, it did clarify what it meant to be, it said severe and exceptional financial, educational, safety, or health impact. It also clarified within that same language what would not qualify, which was childcare, a particular school preference, employment within the district, not a district employee, but within our boundaries, parent separation or divorce, or transportation issues. So, that is spelled out in there currently, in the current language.
Okay. Additional comments? Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you, Ms. Edison, and thank you for taking my call today to answer some of my questions. You, I'm trying to make sense here, and help me out, please. So, in the BP, Policy 5117, the red, what you have crossed out, you can pull it up if you like. It's crossed out, and it starts, because of negative fiscal impacts, no new inter-district, blah, blah, blah. And then below, it's the green. And it doesn't have that opening paragraph. Why is that?
That language is specific to the district, which is AR language.
Okay.
The language that is in the BP is the law language.
So, we go to the AR, the 5517, and that's the how, not the what. The what is the 5117, the policy, correct?
Yes.
And the AR is the how you will be implementing.
Locally, how we implement, and what we rule locally is how we will operate. That's our local language.
So, when I click on Board Policy in, in my packet here, Boardage in the packet here, I scroll down to the green, and it doesn't have the red, what the opening on the red. So, that's part of my confusion, because I'm clicking on the attachment that says, Board Policy 5117, First Reading PDF, and it has the red crossed out.
Yes. All of that language was moved over to the AR.
Okay. And our BP is where?
The green language at the bottom is added language. Red is out, green is in. So, the red is our old language. And typically, we show you what changes were made to our old language. In this case, it was all deleted from the BP and added to the AR.
So, we don't have a standalone BP anymore? Now, it's part of the AR, or are we going to have both?
The BP is the green language. The language that you see at the bottom is the new language of the BP, based on law and CSBA. Their policy. Red got deleted, green got added in.
Right.
That is the BP language that's being submitted for review.
This got replaced with the green language.
Right. But in the replacement, I don't see this paragraph.
Because that's now in
In the BP.
In the AR.
In the AR.
In the reg.
Now, you, now you moved it. That makes sense. I want to make sure we don't lose that. And then you also, I also asked you a question about, how long has the Santa Barbara City College Agreement been in place?
I don't have the exact years, but it's been a while.
A long time.
Quote-unquote. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
I, go ahead. I'm going to ask some questions, mostly for my education. I assume that there may be other folks that might have similar questions. So, when you're talking about board policies versus the ARs, the regulations, you said board policies, that's like the legal requirement for the board, or the legal standard, maybe, is a better way to put it, that we have to meet the administrative regulations.
As practices.
As you, as Ms. Alvarez said, the how.
Yep.
The, so, okay. And for other districts, for those that have worked in other districts or familiar with other districts, partnerships like the one that we have with SBCC, are those partnerships, I don't want to say normal, but common? Because I think when, one of the issues I had in looking at this was that we had, and, and now it's actually spelt out a little bit more than it was previously about why, and it makes a lot of sense why. But it also makes sense to me that we would have similar arrangements with other educational institutions, whether it's Hope School District. We have a teacher that's teaching in Hope, and they're going to have some of the same hardships that someone at SBCC working there is going to have, or could lead a union, it's a feeder school district into our school district. UCSB, I don't know how, we have some relationships with UCSB, but the same way that this SBCC reason and exception makes sense, so does that. So, is it common or common practice? Or is this just how we've always done it? So, it's just?
Well, currently, it's what's been a standard practice here for us in Santa Barbara Unified, and I'll just state that that, it's pre-K. I had to ask around a lot of folks to find out the history of that partnership. And there was a point in time that I was informed that SB, uh, CC and the district had a very, very close relationship, providing us teachers when we didn't find certificated staff, and it was much more intertwined than we are now. And so there was that historical context that formed that partnership, um, as a perk for teachers that were working there and here. Um, is it uncommon, it is not uncommon for local districts to put into their administrative regs, exceptions to the policy based on their current partnerships? That's not uncommon.
I see.
Well, I, I would also say, uh, say that during the time that, 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 uh, partnership agreement, cooperation with SBCC was in place, or put into place, was a time prior to the district being firmly in a basic aid status. So the, the, the language that's now in the AR that says, because of negative fiscal impacts, um, just a reminder that as a basic aid district, we get no additional revenue when a student comes from outside the district. So to the degree that we have to buy more materials, have more teachers, and all those type of things for incoming inter-district transfers, for whatever reason, uh, we are actually, um, penalizing the district financially. Um, so it makes sense to have some restrictions in, in the policy and some exceptions. There's always reasons. Um, but, uh, I'd hope we'd look at, I have another example of, of where I believe our ARs are liberal compared to other districts, is in number five that talks about the, the grades, the, the grade span, where a student that comes in during TK can stay for seven years, to the end of the sixth. Um, typically, uh, inter-district transfers are renewable on an annual basis, and, um, it's, it's more typical, I believe, uh, in my experiences in multiple basic aid districts, that the, the time period of authorizing them is limited usually to the remainder of that school year, and if it's a little bit later, if they're turning into maybe a senior, or going between fifth and sixth. So I'm, uh, I don't have a huge dog in the fight here, but we're in a different world than we were when this was, was done, even in 2017. And understanding the impact of basic aid is an important part of what we set as our administrative regulations. Also have, uh, another question. Um, by, by law, an ed code is a requirement for the board to approve board policies. It is not for the board to approve administrative regulations, and I don't know what our policy here. Do we approve administrative regulations, or simply review them when they come to us?
So I'm not sure what our practice have been. This is the first batch that I've brought, so I'd have to yield that to my colleagues who've been longer.
So the practice, um, in the last at least six years has been, board policies do come before the board. ARs are written, um, based on those board policies, and then, um, approved through executive cabinet and put into place.
Mm-hmm.
So not, they do not come to the board.
Okay. I, I, on a personal basis, I think that's the, the most efficient way to do it. I would presume that when board policies are, um, brought forward, that, um, uh, are when changes to ARs are done, that, that, that perhaps they'd be included for our information, but without, with the, the vote and the approval being simply around the board policy. I, I appreciate having, having that background. Thank you.
And we'll double-check the, the regs to make sure, and the BPs, to make sure that's the case.
It, yeah, it should, it's probably in the board bylaws that wouldn't, uh, give you information about the board's approval of ARs.
They are typically just an accompaniment for information.
Ms. Alvarez?
Um, I had, um, sent a question to Mr. Vance, and I know you're working on it, so, so no judgment. As far as, I would like to know, what's our cost per pupil? So just for an exercise, let's just say our cost per pupil is $20,000. And as Mr. Manning mentioned, being a community-funded district, we don't get any additional revenue for additional students that come in. So every student that comes in, we have to budget, let's just pretend, an additional $20,000 that we could be using for our students, for our teachers, to better support them. So I would be very much interested in seeing, how many transfers do we have right now, and what does that translate to our fiscal, what our fiscal impact? And if, uh, it, it, if it is considered that we make changes to our board policy where we are more liberal, I would want to know our potential fiscal impact, because that's very important to me, uh, before making a, a decision if we were to make any changes to our board policy regarding, uh, being more liberal and taking transfers outside of our district. And I do, uh, recall one of our, I think, discussions before, um, and I don't recall exactly with whom, but it was, part of the agreement with Santa Barbara City College was also the, our dual enrollment agreement that we have with SBCC, where they take our students, our high school students, and, and they offer classes. So I, maybe that played a part. I don't know. This was before my time, but I would imagine that played a part in that as well.
Yeah, what I've heard was it was a very robust partnership, even more than what we are now.
Yes.
So, yeah, so I think, just to give a little bit of history, because this was even pre-me as well, too. So John certainly has a probably more depth of that history, but I think this also is representative of the times that have changed, and how we need to do that. So even this discussion to this level, to better be able to understand in terms of both the cost per pupil, what is the financial impact? Because it has gone between, because we've tottered, teeter-tottered between basic aid and, you know, and I think they were liberal to allow that teeter and totter, and we were never really firmly into anything for a long time. So I think it didn't really get pushed to that level, but now we're firmly in that. But to go back further, this discussion is so critical as we start to bring these things, making the distinction between board policy and AR. So that also, particularly, we're talking about transfers now, and how the public may see this, how they may understand it. So the more clear we can be and transparent about how that may change inter-district, you know, uh, policy, inter-district transfer policy. So this is very, uh, you know, um, important discussion, and, and, and the clearer we can make it, uh, to the public, how it may impact decisions when they're, you know, asking for transfers and, and being clear in that. So I really appreciate the clarity and making distinction between our board policy, and, and it's the how, is the other piece of how we implement, so to speak. Um, and, and also, to your point about the AR is the local input, how we locally do it, right? So that's another, also distinction in terms of how we locally, meaning Santa Barbara Unified, does it? That's a really, uh, I think, important distinction that you also mentioned, too. So, thank you. Mr. Escobedo?
Um, we're not voting on this, right?
No, this is the first reading.
First reading?
So I'm taking input, input to make any necessary changes.
Okay. I would say, um, for me, I would see us running into the same discussions or similar discussions next year when it, when it comes to inter-district transfers. A couple of things that I would be interested in, um, discussing further. One, taking a look at our partnerships, particularly with other institutions that are similar to SBCC. I'm gonna find it, I'm gonna find it really difficult to say yes to a parent from SBCC and no to someone, um, Galita Union School District, um, who's a feeder school district for us. The, the impact and the hardship is the same. The financial impact would be the same. But because of this agreement, um, I'd be interested, and I'd be open to accepting the answer that the partnership with SBCC is so robust that it meets a certain threshold, that where the benefit is part of the, the partnership versus another institution, similar institution, maybe doesn't have the same type of partnership with us, and so that's why we don't offer that benefit. I'd be okay with that, but I want to have that discussion and kind of tease that out a little bit. Are there other partners that we're leaving out of this benefit that probably meet the same type of threshold? The other, uh, part, as we think about, okay, what are the financial impacts? Can we be, um, I, I, we're using the term liberal. Can we be more liberal, um, in other parts of this, uh, administrative regulation or the board policy? And maybe tighten up other parts? Maybe one of the areas where we do tighten up is we, um, address the, uh, allowing a student to stay for the whole grade span. And maybe we tighten that up a little bit, whether it's an annual basis, or, um, we can take a look at that. And that'll offer us opportunities to expand in other areas in terms of the benefits, so that we don't have these vast financial impacts, and we're accommodating it in other areas, which is a common practice amongst other school districts, it sounds like. So, um, that's another piece that I would, I would like to tease out. Before I would feel comfortable supporting, um, the, the board policy and the administrative regulation, because I just want to get ahead of those conversations again, which were really difficult.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh, it was really hard for me to say yes to some and no to others. And so, um, that's, that, in terms of feedback, that's what I would be looking for the next time we discuss this.
So for clarity, I do want to, uh, just inform the board, families currently reapply every year. It's just a criteria that we say, if you're a continuing student, we'll grant approval through the end of that grade span at the school. Sites still have the authority to revoke a transfer if they've done the due process, which is inform parents early on that they're at jeopardy of losing their enter, and then notifying them in writing that they've made the recommendation up to Student and Family Services to revoke it. So students are then sent back to their, their home schools. Um, there is not a comparison, like, it's not balanced out, the number of enters we get and the number of revocations we receive. But families that are under number five, they do reapply every year still. Even though we have, there are board policies, only because the laws changed around 2019 that allowed for the agreements to say students can stay through the end of the grade span, which then cut down on the work districts were doing to automatically approve everyone who was already continuing enrollment. But that isn't the case here.
I see.
They apply every single year. It is only a one-year, um, agreement approved, so every year they have to reapply.
Help me understand, if, if you have to apply every year, yet there is an explicit exception for grade span, can the board deny the, or the district deny the reto, uh, the, the, the reapplication?
Yes, for fiscal impact, for grade, because they cannot displace a resident student. So although it's-
But the explicit notation of number five says that, that, um, exceptions include to allow students to remain in the district for the grade span.
There's also law that says they cannot displace, so if there's a grade level, if, if the grade is impacted, they cannot displace a resident student, so they will still be revoked, even if we approved it at the beginning of the year. If students move into the community and the grade span is impacted, enters are the first students to be, uh, rescinded and sent back to their home district, even if we allow them in at the beginning of the year.
And is the grade span, um, the grade span, um, impact done on a district-wide or site-by-site basis?
Site-by-site.
So is it possible that a student that's in a elementary grade span where the impact is there could be denied at one school, but then be offered or given an opportunity to attend another school where the grade span isn't impacted?
If there's space.
I, um, I did a little quick look at the board policy under, under, um, uh, it's actually the board bylaw in, in the ninety-one, uh, the nine thousands, and, and it says exactly what you said, that, that the AR is the, uh, responsibility of the administration. However, it says the board, uh, the board may, um, approve. So regulations, yeah, it may. And, and in a case like this, I think that there's a lot of interest in the board in making sure that this regulation in particular meets what our expectations are. So I would ask that this have clear board, um, consensus and, and support for whatever changes we're doing. And it's early. I really appreciate that this is here today in August, and so that if this is something that's gonna take a little more in discussion as a second read and so forth, where we can really look at what you've found out, um, I think taking that time would be well, well-advised, and, and I really appreciate it. This is a, um, and I, I also make a comment to, to Gabe in regard to the, the partnerships of other school districts. One of the things you need to know is that, um, I, in, in Galita, um, Galita doesn't accept any partnership agreement from Santa Barbara Unified in the elementary schools. Um, in general, districts that are basic aid are doing everything they can to not put students in that they don't get any funding for. And, um, and that would be, uh, so I think that in that case, the exceptions, um, in the AR need to be something that we are all agreeing on, are true exceptions that we will be paying for doing, rather than getting funding to, uh, to be able to do it. Yeah.
Can I just add, uh, just clarification to what you were just saying, Bill? Um, the policy, or the bylaw, the 9310, specifically, it's, it's saying that the board may review and approve regulations for the purpose of ensuring conformity with the intent of board policy. And this is actually addressing the updating of board policy. At the beginning of it, it's talking about this, the superintendent is the one who's responsible for the development enforcement of the AR, when you're creating new BP. But this is, again, we're, we're shifting policy, and so that, that could be a possible, uh, point here with the board.
I, I think it's also important for the board to know that, um, when policy revisions are provided to us by CSBA, because laws change, they also provide administrative regulations. They are not entirely developed, um, locally. They are, are, uh, again, developed with the recommendations of CSBA, and can be modified according to local need.
Ms. Alvarez?
My interest, one of my, the clarifications I, I need, and you already spoke to this a little bit. And when I was reading this, um, I think it was last night or the night before I lost track, I, I was, uh, imagining a scenario, so we have a TK student now who is approved, who is a current, uh, student of the district, who lives in district boundaries, and then they move, let's say, out of town. Then they apply for, for a transfer, because they moved out of town. And we approve, it's approved by you or by us. And what you're saying is that they have to reapply every year? In my mind, I thought they automatically stayed until sixth grade, even though they lived out of town, because they were already approved in kindergarten, but you're saying that's not the case.
No, our, our transfer approvals are annual, so they have to renew annually. Our board policies, some districts do have practices where if you're approved, you're approved for the grade span of the school you're in. That's because the law changed around twenty, 2018, 2019, that allowed that to be part of, uh, co, the inter-district transfer contracts. Prior to that, or agreements, it was, they were all annually.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
And, um, also along the same lines as Mr. Manning says, um, I know districts who have purposely stopped taking transfers because that would impact their basic aid status, their community-funded status. So it is, it is a, there's a fiscal component that, eh, in my mind, we have to be very conscientious of. Uh, my responsibility, my commitment is to Santa Barbara Unified, and that's the lens that I'm gonna be looking at any policy that comes before me. So, thank you.
Yes, I thank you, uh, with, uh, Ms. Escobedo?
Uh, last thing is, um, is it fairly simple and not too convoluted to figure out how many students are, uh, in our school district through a transfer under number two, so the SBCC, um, uh, portion of the administrative regulation? I think that would be an interesting, because if it's only a few students, and if we can track it over a few years, then maybe it's a moot point, and it's not even worth discussing. Um, but that, that, that's the primary part of this policy that I find hard. Obviously, there are financial impacts. Um, but there are financial impacts right now for this policy, and, um, I think we need to take a look at it. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, is there any other information or data that the board would like me to bring back for the second reading for you to consider? I do have, um, a board member Escobedo's request for the SBCC data. Is there any other data that can help us with the conversation about this?
I sent an email to Mr. Vance yesterday, so I believe it's a duplicate request, so he may already be working on this for the next meeting. So, thank you.
Yes, um, we, we have, uh, a few more data points, so per pupil expenditure. Uh, and I'll be sharing these additional points with you that I just couldn't put together by this afternoon.
No worries.
Okay.
So I think this is a very important discussion, and, and almost to the point, I think, because this will impact, uh, folks in how to do it. So we may need a longer time to be able to discuss this, these issues that are coming back to the board, and really making sure that we spend the necessary time on the agenda, Steve, as you guys start to, you know, when, when this comes back, that we need to give it due-time discussion. Certainly in making sure that the public is aware of what we're doing, because it certainly has a direct impact on them, uh, them as well, probably first and foremost. Um, and, and I would say, just ha, having been here, and I believe this is in 20, that number five was very much in the level of discussion that we're doing right here. So I don't know, Kenya, for, uh, background in history, uh, if we can go back to that October 20th, when this was originally done, the discussion that the board was having, it was right, exactly to the point of what we're saying. You know, because I think that's where that example, staying in TK, once you're here, even though you were looking at it annually, they came to the board for a review. But if they were already here, and it wasn't displacing, we continue to do that. And so, but as we're tightening this up, because again, we're in different times now. But it's, um, this was a very much, you know, discussion, uh, from the board, if we were, I don't, you know, where we can go back and get that history of that. where we can go back and get that history of that, but we were definitely talking about that. And again, we were in between, uh, you know, um, ADA versus basic aid. So that was kind of making the decision, we were trying to give us a much, a leeway to be able to work through it, as we did. But this, we're in different times where, you know, the things that we need to use are very important part, points that are being brought up here. But put to that end, we need to give good time to discuss this and make sure there are questions out and so that the public is very much aware and that they have input on this and their concern so that we are, make sure that we're including on this piece.
And that is the bulk of our transfers or under that, it's continued enrollment?
Okay. All right, so any additional final in plates or whatever? Okay.
Again, thank you for bringing this forward. This is, it's not fun, it's not pretty stuff, but it is absolutely a critical conversation for us as we, we're settling into a long run of basic aid. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Edison.
All right, board members, office, we didn't have any items to return from consent. Um, I would move us to, uh, coming, uh, events or actually future agenda items, which is the summer graduations, August tenth. Uh, August fourteenth is the joint meeting, our next meeting, actually is joint meeting on August fourteenth with the city of, uh, city of Santa Barbara. I was gonna say city of somebody else, uh, city of Santa Barbara. Uh, our first day of school is the twenty-first, but don't we have an August sixteenth for an all, something at San Marcos Day? I don't see this on here, so I don't see.
So yes, we have the, the big grand opening at eight thirty, um, at San Marcos on Wednesday, the sixteenth.
August sixteenth?
It's all staff.
Yeah.
Mr. Vence, for the joint meeting with city council and school district board of trustees, I really would appreciate when you have any information that you can share with the board so that we can start preparing, uh, be ready, so it's time we'll spend for the council, for us, for staff. That would be very much appreciated.
So Ms. Edison and I have been working with the city, um, and we will be finalizing with, um, the, the slide deck. And, uh, we'll be posting the agenda along with the city, posting their agenda at the same time, so it'd be at the end of Thursday. So you'll be getting that information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Board members, are we ready to conclude this meeting at seven thirty-five? I just wanna note that.
Seven thirty-six.
Okay, all right, she had to be there. But all right, uh, so seven thirty-six, I covered Ms. Alvarez. It's been a whole emotion. We need to make a motion. This is action, right? Make the motion, Ms. Alvarez.
I make the motion that we adjourn the meeting. I think it's maybe seven thirty-seven.
Seven now, yeah. Do I hear a second? Second. All right, all in favor, I will claim the battle. All right, thank you.